Invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Kevin Flores will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord, we gather here tonight to thank you for our blessings. Lord, we ask you that you continue watching over our wonderful city and keep an eye out, particularly on those that are struggling through this pandemic and that are suffering from this virus. Lord, we ask that tonight you allow us to make the best decisions for the residents of our town and to continue guiding us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Kevin. All right. I'd like to again welcome you to this regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. And I'll ask the city clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Brian Powell? Amelia Williams?
Here.
Jeff Watson? Mike Overton?
Here.
Mike Lawson? Kevin Flores? Randall Harriman? Mark Fugierus? Ernest Kate?
Here.
All right, thank you. We're at item five on the agenda. These are, this is the portion of each meeting the council sets aside to hear comments from our residents. If we have any residents that would like to address the council, we just ask that you go to the microphone up there, clearly state your name and address, and please keep your comments brief, and understand that the council won't take action on anything you bring forward tonight. So is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? All right. We'll move on to the approval of minutes.
Yes, I would.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
I was over here on the side, kind of lost out the side.
I'm sorry. Go right ahead, sir. Name and address, please.
My name is Glenn Trammell. I live at 3910 A Allegheny Terrace. Like the living in duplex.
Okay.
And I want to talk about that. I understand that you're looking at putting sprinklers in.
That's, that's an agenda item tonight. Would, could you wait until that agenda item?
Yes, sir, sure could.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now, we'll move to item six, approval of minutes. You've had an opportunity to see them, council. If there's no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. What's your pleasure on procedural motions, item seven?
Move for A and B.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Fugierus? Powell? Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right, at this time, I'd like to invite Janie Lane to the microphone to give us an update or a presentation on an upcoming event.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, city council. My name is Janie Lane, and I am the president and founder of Bo's Blessings, which is a veterans' nonprofit service organization. I am also currently serving as the president of the Springdale Veterans Memorial Organization for the city of Springdale. And today I come to you to talk about something that's really important, and our city is fortunate to have been chosen to participate. So if you'll give me just a few moments. On September 11th, 2001, terrorists hijacked four civilian aircraft, crashing two of them into the towers of the World Trade Center in New York City and a third into the Pentagon outside of Washington, DC. The fourth hijacked aircraft crashed in southwestern Pennsylvania. It was brought down by passengers who wanted to prevent the hijackers from crashing into another symbol of our freedom and democracy. The terrorists launched the deadliest terrorist attack on the United States ever, killing thousands of innocent people. On that day, 2,983 men, women, and children were killed as a result of that terrorist attack. This does not include the thousands that have died since then from the exposures that they suffered due to the terrorist attack. Those numbers are untold. They're still going up every day from the exposures to what happened in those towers. On December 18th, 2001, the president signed a joint resolution making public law to make September 11th Patriot Day. It is a federal holiday that is recognized every year. This year, on 9/11, we are approaching the 20th anniversary of this horrific attack. And in light of what's going on in the world today, it is very important that we, as a community, come together and set aside mask mandates or no mask mandates, vaccines or no vaccines. And we come together as a community, and we remember all those who lost their life and all of us whose lives have been impacted by that terrorist attack. So on September 11th, Bo's Blessings, along with the city of Springdale and the Springdale Senior Center and volunteers throughout Springdale, will be present at the corner of Emma and 71, and we will be placing 2,983 American flags in remembrance of those lives lost. You are invited to come and help us place flags if you would like. We will be at that intersection at 7:40 in the morning. We have approval to park at Cisco Funeral Home and at the insurance company directly behind that square, that corner of the city. At 9:30, we would ask you to be present at our honor and remembrance. It is the first annual flag honor and remembrance ceremony. There were 100 communities selected in the United States. Each state is considered a community. Springdale was offered this project, this event, through Bo's Blessings involvement in the veteran community. And we could have taken it anywhere, and we want it home with our veterans and our veteran community and with our fire and police department. So we are one of the communities in the state of Arkansas that will be hosting this event. We'll be at the Springdale Senior Center. The mayor will be there. He is giving the impact statement for the city. We will be reading 50 names of souls lost on that day. Each state is assigned the same 50 names. Each community gets to do it a little different. And we have seven Arkansauers who were killed on that day. People who were born in the state of Arkansas who died that day in the tower or in one of the airline flights. So we will be presenting their information at that time. The mayor's secretary is going to sing the national anthem. Amy is, she just found out today she's going to actually be here. So she's going to be in person and do that, be outside the flagpole. The mayor made sure that we had a flagpole in honor of Harry Joyner, who is a 97-year-old WWII veteran. Harry will be joining us in raising the flag and leading the pledge of allegiance that day. We have, our final speaker will be Senator John Bozeman, who was instrumental in getting this honor and remembrance resolution passed for the state for the 20th anniversary, for the United States for the 20th anniversary. And the Ozark Highlander bagpipes will play the closing anthem. So you are all invited to attend, and we are honoring our fire, police, and veterans. It's, it's more for the fire and police that day and for the state police. The day before, we are going to be gifting to all of the fire stations, police department, and state police headquarters. We have 40 boxes we're packing of goodies. Harps Foods Store donated Martha Harps Road. Tyson Foods donated bacon. We have somebody who's donated TCBY. We have these boxes we're going to fill. So if you would like to come help pack food or you would like to donate for a product to go into the boxes for the police and fire, let me know. My phone number is 479-530-7728. And you are welcome to call me and get involved. And mayor, we truly, truly appreciate you buying into this and helping us make this happen.
Thanks, Janie. Thanks for your leadership and putting this all together.
You're welcome.
And for the committee. Thank you. All right. We're at item nine, Health Sanitation and Property Maintenance Committee, and Chairman Amelia Williams. Amelia?
Ms., we have one ordinance on the agenda. And it reads, "An ordinance ordering the raising, demolition, and removal of certain residential structure within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, located at 1205 Crutcher Street, to declare an emergency and for other purposes." It was forwarded from committee to, with a recommendation for approval. And I'm going to turn this over to Ernest Kate, our city attorney.
Thank you. This was heard at committee last Monday, and there was no one present at committee to speak about this. So it was forwarded to council with a recommendation for approval. I wanted to make you aware, yesterday I received a phone call from the property owner, Ms. Laird. She said she was going to be here tonight. I don't know if she is or not, or if anyone's here on her behalf. But I, in anticipation of that, I've placed before you a spreadsheet just giving you a history for this property of the city since 2015, showing that we have passed three different ordinances placing cleanup liens on this property. There's also been 11 different prosecutions for unsightly unsanitary conditions on this property since 2015, and it shows the amount of restitution that was ordered in those cases to be paid. In all, we have, between liens and victim restitution in the prosecution of the ordinance cases, $7,869.80 in taxpayer funds that have been spent on keeping this property clean. Billing, billing inspector red-tagged this property in March. No one's supposed to be living there. I actually pulled up, and I've got, got them printed off here. There's been 50 calls for service to the police department from this address since the first of this year. Everything from domestic disturbance, disturbances, fights, trespassing, intoxicated subjects, gunshots. They've actually made several arrests out of this house since it's been red-tagged. And I don't know if any of y'all have driven by there. I drove by there today at lunch, and there were actually two vehicles there. It was obvious someone was there. They're not supposed to be there by law. So I just wanted to make you aware of this. I don't know if Ms. Laird is here, but, but if ever, I told the mayor this afternoon, if ever there was a candidate for a raise and removal, I think this is it. I believe there's no water to this property. There's a sewer leak in the backyard. Like I said, if any of y'all have driven by and seen this property, you know what I'm talking about. So.
And Mr. Kate?
I think that's them that just pulled in down there.
It is.
Yep.
Vehicle was there today when I drove by.
Yep. I don't know if you want to wait for them.
You don't want to wait? You want to go ahead and act? You want to come back to this?
I have a question, Ernest. Is there a difference between, I mean, some of the restitution order in the lien amounts?
No.
Would that be the same cleanup numbers?
No, they're different. See, what happened was, if you notice, the dates on the lien ordinances are more recent than the ordinance prosecutions, because we don't like to put a lien on someone's property if we don't have to. And Ms. Laird, who's the property owner, you see that she was prosecuted four times, last time being in September of 19. She's still paying victim restitution to the court at $30 a month. She's the one that suggested, instead of citing her and lien, and citing her and making her pay victim restitution to the court, we started putting the liens.
What is the restitution on the?
No. It's separate from the liens. It was, the, the restitution ordered in the ordinance violations were ordered as victim restitution in the disposition of this case. Yes, sir. And there were three different individuals that were prosecuted. I believe Ms. Weston is Ms. Laird's daughter, and Mr. Weston is Ms. Laird's son-in-law. And that, that's who I believe is.
Did you read the title already?
She did.
I'm going to, Ernest, be approved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve.
I really think we ought to. Yeah, I think we do it. And I, I got a couple of questions that may.
So we'll just hold on a minute.
Well, Ernest.
It's 6 o'clock.
Ernest, when it comes to the restitution and the liens, so the restitutions are paid monthly by these individuals, and the liens will get at the back end after the property is sold, correct?
Correct. It'll be collected as back taxes. It even has priority over the mortgage. And the mortgage shoulder was notified at the committee meeting and the council meeting, and they didn't respond either. Actually, I was going to tell you, there's a, there is an amount, you see in here, clean, not leaned yet, $528.39. That's from an abatement the city did on July 9th. That will be coming forward as another lien. And Neighborhood Services tell me, and I believe it after driving by there today, that it's due to be abated again this Friday. Like they clean it up and then these things appear on the property.
They should be your mom's payroll.
Well, the raising would be a lien as well at some point in time, right?
Correct. If they, if they didn't choose to raise it themselves and the city had to raise it, then we would come back with an ordinance placing a lien for their cost of raising. Yes.
And they understand that after that is complete, and they, if they want to sell the property itself, that all of that will be a deduction from their sale price, correct?
They have been told that, yes. Repeatedly. I don't know if Ron has anything to add, but I know code enforcement is.
They've, they've been told. I'm not so sure they understand, but they definitely have been told, so.
Thank you, Tom.
Turn this side. Would, would any of y'all like to address, we're, we're dealing with this item right now. And our city attorney has given the council some of the background on, and, and there is a motion and a second to approve the raise and removal. So if y'all would like to address the council, you're welcome to. Guys, do we have a handheld? You can pull that one down? Okay, thank you. Could you give us your name, please, ma'am?
Me?
Yes.
Dorothy Laird.
Okay. Ms. Laird, the city attorney has presented the, the information about the, the liens on your property, and, and we have read the, the title of the ordinance for the raise and removal to, to tear down the, the structure on the property. And we have a motion and a second, and we're ready to vote on that. But before we saw you coming in and before we voted, we wanted to be sure we heard any, any comments you'd like to make.
I don't know where I'm going to live at. I'm sick. I can't hardly get around fall all the time. I ain't got nowhere to live.
So you're living in the house now?
No.
Okay. I'm missing something.
She doesn't live in the house. She moved out several months ago. She's staying with her sister, the last I heard, in Sonora.
Yeah.
The people who are living in there is potentially a daughter, a son-in-law, and one of their children, along with other people. I just know of those three. It's not supposed to be there at all because of no water.
Right. No water. It's been red-tagged. Okay.
Well, they had to turn it off. It busted. Couldn't get it fixed.
Okay. All right. Do you have anything else to add, ma'am?
Every time we got stuff to fix the house, they threw it away.
Come up to the microphone, please.
Every time we got stuff in this house, they, the city threw it away. Every time we got stuff to fix it up, they threw it away.
Okay.
And we tried to tell them to split the house, and they wouldn't. They just said, oh, well. They still threw it away anyway. I mean, we're not rich. I've been trying to fix it up by myself with no money. And they're going on the sides, upside, step, yeah, step forward.
Tom, what kind of things have we abated from the property? Ron, do you have a, do you have some examples of some of the things y'all have? Okay.
No building materials.
Okay.
We had a cabinet.
All right.
I mean, the cabinet top, they took it away. We had a bunch of cabinets. My son took and put them outside the road because he said we couldn't have them there.
They took them away.
We can't go out. We can't buy everything new. Because I know I get a disability check just as well as my mom does. My dad left that house for me. And it's killing my heart because of it.
Well, it ain't going to do no good, Linda.
All right. Any other questions, council, or any other input?
You still care.
Yeah, go ahead and, go ahead and explain, please, Ernest.
If this, Ms. Laird, Ms. Weston, if this ordinance passes, it would give you, if they pass the emergency clause, it would give you 30 days to either pull a building permit or raise and remove the structure. And if it's not done so, then the city would have the legal right to go in and raise it and then lien for their cost. Yeah, I have raised means down to the, down to the dirt.
Yes, sir.
And if I can, mayor, I'll say, I, I've spoken with the son-in-law numerous times. The police had me out here on this, at this particular juncture back in March, and I worked with them. I gave them 14 days before I red-tagged it for them to get things done. Nothing got done. They, at that time, I went back over there. That's when I discovered that the sewer was also leaking on the ground. So I had to water pole because that's a health hazard. He had told me they were going to get stimulus checks, and they were going to buy new windows. That never happened.
He just got approved on his check.
Never, ever did I write anything about a cabinet top. That's not my issues or, it's not countertops. It's the safety of the people there. Windows are, every window busted out. And what is there possibly is boarded up. And it's truly a hazard for firemen to have to go in there and fight and people to get out.
Thank you, Tom.
That's always why the boards red tag, because cops told us to put them there.
Hey, ma'am, if there's no other comments, then I'm going to call for the vote.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Has emergency clause?
Move the emergency clause to be adopted.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
But the ordinance and emergency clause carry seven zero. What that means is that y'all have 30 days to either give it the billing inspector about pulling a building permit for the property or have it raised. And if not, then the city will have the right to come in and do it. We've been dealing with this since 2015.
Thank you. And with that, we close Health and Sanitation, and we'll move on to ordinance committee.
Yes, I'd worry item 10, ordinance committee, and Chairman Mike Overton.
Yeah, mayor, we have two ordinance that came before the ordinance committee. The first one is a ordinance amending Chapter 78, Article 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. And it deals with smoking and the use of tobacco products in our parks and recreation areas. It was passed to the council for recommendation for approval.
Okay. Is Chad here? Chad, you want to get up and just give us a little background on this, please? Well, that'll, that'll be fine, too. You bring up whoever you want.
This is Deb Kaufman with the Community Clinic, and she kind of spearheaded this effort, and I'll let her finish.
Actually, I'm with the Northwest Arkansas Tobacco and Drug Free Coalition. And we are here interested because we're concerned about the, the health of the children and the exposure to secondhand smoke in the, in parks. The cleanliness as far as the, you know, the parks. We have youth groups frequently who do cleanups within the parks, and they come out with bags of thousands and thousands of cigarette butts and/or just packaging, you know, trash from cigarette cleanups. So our concern is, and what we're interested in, is seeing that, because you have such beautiful parks in Springdale, and we want to see that continue, and we want to see our young people to grow up not being exposed to secondhand smoke and as well as not just learning the smoking altogether.
Thank you.
Did we ever add anything regarding the parking lot? Or I know there was discussion of the library being included in this, or is there something that we were adding from last week?
We've already got an ordinance dealing with the smoking at the library, and they've got signs up.
And that would include their parking lot?
They have a designated area.
And the parks, does that include the parking lot as well?
If it's park property, it would, yes.
It will. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions, comments? There's also something we wasn't mentioning that includes vaping, which I thought was interesting when we first began to discuss this. If, if recreational marijuana ever becomes available, well, that's going to open up a whole new can of worms with vaping in our, in our parks if we don't go ahead and put a, put a stop to this now. So that was another important point, I thought, that I was not aware of, so.
I move the ordinance pass. Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Are there any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this? Okay, council, back to you. If there's no questions, I'll ask for the vote. Denise?
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause to be adopted.
Overton?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman? Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell? Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
But the ordinance emergency clause carry seven zero.
The next item we have on the agenda, mayor, is an ordinance amending Section 46-51 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. And this is concerns requiring automatic sprinkler, our fire sprinkler systems in duplexes and townhouses. And the time of presentation before the committee, there was no formal opposition. It was presented by the fire marshal, and he presented a, a note of neutrality by the builders association. But I don't know about the rest of the council, but since then, I've had numerous contacts from folks in opposition, and I think there are several here tonight that would like to have an opportunity to address this.
Blake, why don't you start, and then we'll, we'll open it up for anyone that.
I'll move that be adopted.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Blake, it's all yours.
Yeah, I appreciate you listening to me one more time. And I just wanted to give kind of a brief overview and then answer some specific questions. that came up in committee that I had time to, to research and bring an answer back for you. So what we're attempting to do is expand the sprinkler requirements in multifamily dwellings, which already exists for everything except townhouses and two-family dwellings. And so the ordinance amendment is to adopt section R three thirteen point one and three thirteen point two of the International Residential Code, which requires sprinklers in those particular dwellings. And what I realize is that there's a few data-supported undeniable facts associated with this. One is that the presence of sprinklers reduces fatalities and reduces property loss when fires occur. And two, there is an associated cost. Some of the questions from committee about multifamily residential fires, so our last two years of data, we've had twelve significant fires. And by that, I mean, there was significant property loss and they were investigated by the Fire Marshal's office for origin and cause. Twelve incidents with a direct estimated property loss of two hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. The data supports a reduction in direct property loss with the presence of sprinklers at ninety-five percent. So if we reduced that number by ninety-five percent, we would be less, left with two years of multifamily loss at twelve thousand four hundred dollars savings, you know, in direct property loss of two hundred forty-five thousand one hundred. The perspective I have as a responder is that direct property loss doesn't correlate to personal loss and doesn't include things like inconvenience and other life-altering factors that occur with even a relatively small fire in residential occupancy. The fire at AQ Circle was contained to one unit, made four units uninhabitable. The fire at eight hundred Henrietta involved one unit, made eight units uninhabitable. Those eight units are still vacant today. And that incident occurred on August the third of twenty twenty. Another question came up about insurance. So according to the National Association of Home Builders, the majority of insurers offer a discount for fire sprinklers. In Arkansas in particular, they range from Allstate at four percent to State Farm at ten percent. That's a, like I said, a, a difficult thing to quantify accurately because it's different for every house and every insurer. But those are the numbers. National average is two to sixteen percent for those companies that offer a discount. And typically discounts are capped at twenty percent. And so all of your discounts add up and you can't exceed twenty percent. So that's just where they end up. That's how Chief Irwin enjoys a twenty percent discount at his house.
All right. Thank you, Blake. Anything else?
I don't think so. I just wanna be clear that, that these would be thirteen D systems, just so that, for reference, not like the sprinkler system that's in this building or in a hotel. Thirteen D systems are allowed to be a multi-function part of the building's cold water plumbing system. And the other question was timing, sorry about that. You know, why is it, now was a good time for us? Well, it was because last year, when the state plumbing association and the Health Department relaxed their regulations that prohibited plumbers from doing sprinkler work and sprinkler contractors from doing plumbing work to make this easier and more affordable. I think that was the last of the questions, unless you've got anything else tonight.
You might have some more in a minute, so, yeah, thank you. Anyone wanna speak to this, either? Any opinion? Yeah.
Again, I'm Glenn Trammell, thirty-nine, ten A Allegheny Terrace. A couple of comments. I've lived in a number of cities, nice cities, and this is among nice cities I live in. I've been here only six years. I appreciate all of you providing a lot of nice amenities. We enjoy the parks, the trails. We like Springdale. And so I, I, I appreciate the work you do. But I, a number of years, I bought a couple of duplexes on Allegheny Terrace. And at the same time, I don't know if you know of Larry Armstrong, a surgeon in, in Fayetteville. I bought his home that he lived in, in Fort Smith. Really nice home, beautiful home, the back of the home, there's huge glass going out to wherever. I lost my job a few years ago and my wife and I decided to come live in a duplex that we bought in oh-five, thinking it's gonna be temporary. We love it there. We love Springdale. We like, um, we like living in the duplex. There, and also, I, I bought it as an investment. Now, if I were to, but look at trying to, as an owner, buy a house that has sprinklers in it and think about maintaining that, the chance of some person hitting that sprinkler and the thing going off and wasting my duplex, that's scary to me, to, to, to think about that cost. Also, just thinking about living in there. I understand if you've got a two-story apartment and a fireman trying to go there and you've got fire, fire coming out of the windows, that's one thing, a duplex. It seems like to me, I mean, I'm not a fireman and I, I respect them, I respect the ones that went up in the tower and it fell on them. So I'm a big policeman, big fireman person, so I respect his opinion. But I really wonder, at a duplex level, what, one thing I like about the duplex, I understand they put a concrete wall between the two units for the purpose of fire and for the purpose of sound. And I, that's one thing that makes this place attractive to me, that people have a rock concert next to me and I don't hear anything. In the same way as other ways to put insulation in walls. I'm big on insulation. I just soon instead of putting the money into pipes, put it into that firewall. And you've got, um, the, you know, they've got to, like, put two sheet rocks on either one, two walls, and that's things that can be done. I would entertain looking at that, cause i, if I were, I'm also a realtor, by, by the way, I worked for Bowdor for a number of years as an engineer, then I moved up here. And is, if I try to present a duplex that had a high-maintenance type thing in it, that's what I'd say, I'm trying to convince a buyer to buy it. Whoa, I, I don't know what kind of good feelings I can convince them about, that some kid's not gonna get a stick and hit that thing. And I can't imagine the cost. It just seemed like to me it's an overkill for duplex, it's just that simple. And I can understand it if you've got multi-stories and stuff like that, or maybe they're not properly mitigated between walls. Yes, but I, I would just entertain another way to do it. So I just have a firm know. And again, to leave on a positive note, I really like living in Springdale.
Well, Springdale's glad you're here, Glenn. Thank you. We'll, we'll give everybody a shot, but you wanna address some of that?
Yeah, just, just briefly, just so there's no misunderstanding, there is no requirement for firewalls in duplexes. If you have one, congratulations, that's safer than most out there. At most, they have what's called a, a smoke separation, which is sheet rock, otherwise typically the attics are common across a duplex, just like a, a single-family residence.
Well, help us, Blake, when are, what, what, what triggers the need for a firewall, the requirement for a firewall? I mean, that's probably an overly simple, but i, is it, let's say, a, a triplex, a fourplex? Does any of that?
No, they, they, they don't require firewall. In fact, if they had fire separation like that, and they would be considered townhouses, they would be considered individual dwelling units. And so they don't do that, and that's why triplexes, quadplexes are, require sprinklers today.
Okay.
Sure. I think I can from here, is that as, as, if I were living in my duplex, I would not be living there if I had the wall that he's talking about. I, I like the plant.
Right.
To have you double sheet rock, double wall, first concrete, whatever.
Okay. All right. Okay. Glenn, that's a really good comment, but nobody at home heard it because you're not at the microphone.
Please excuse me, people at home. I, I, I really like the firewall. Again, it's, it adds quietness and it adds protection. I, in this home, like I told you, I had a beautiful home, gorgeous home, and I was planning on downsides into twenty-five hundreds feet. I came down to fourteen fifty and love it. Why, it's quiet. Also, it's a peace of mind with fire hazards with this. When I have my renters there, the first thing they said, they cannot believe how quiet it is in here. So it's a, it, it will help the owner to have a firewall, cause it makes it quieter and it makes it safer in not putting some kind of water system in that, I, I don't.
Okay, we got you. Thank you, Glenn.
And point of clarification, thanks, Mike, that duplexes, triplexes, they do require a separation, but it's not a firewall, so that's a point of semantics for, from a fire versus a building official.
Okay.
So a firewall has to be, you know, two-hour separation. It's not, this is sheet rock that separates the spaces out, so you're correct.
Okay, well, I think we got you, Glenn.
Well, I might make one more comment.
All right.
As a realtor.
Make it brief, please. We got other people who may wanna speak. Go ahead.
Just briefly about that, I'm a realtor, like I mentioned. I was representing a medical doctor that was buying a house on Pussamun, right behind Sherman, um, Paint, of walnut. He, um, she wanted to know about the quietness of it and also about the fire rate. They put on double thickness sheet rock on both sides. They put insulation, two, two separate walls. That was for Rogers at that time, that was a firewall and insulation wall, from what I understood.
All right, thank you, Glenn. Is there someone else that'd like to speak?
Mayor, just so everyone's aware, the real purpose of the fire sprinklers is to save people's lives. It's not to deal with water damage, it's not to deal with whether or not you have extensive fire damage in your house, it's to allow you to get out of the home. That's how it was designed. The beauty of them is, is that due to the fact that we've had so many years of studies on these things, we found out that ninety-five percent of the fires are kicked off by these actual fire sprinklers. In other words, they're put out. So in essence, what I like to tell everybody is it's like having a firefighter in your home twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. That's what we're after, is the safety for people to get outside their home when they have a fire. And I can tell you to date, twenty-seven people have died in Arkansas this year due to house fires.
Thank you, Chief. Well, Glenn, I, I, I think we let her, Glenn, let's let us some other people have the mic here. We got you. You got a quiet house that has a nice wall in between and, and thank you. I'm, look, I.
I agree.
There's a, there's a difference. I'm, I'm, whatever I think about this issue, I'm not gonna argue that sprinklers don't make it safer. I'm just not. Now, the other question is, should we do it or not? That, that's a bigger question. But I, sprinklers make it safer. I, and, and, well, go ahead, Blake.
I sure would like to.
Yeah.
The, the other valid concern is a, a worry about accidental discharge. That data supports that that is extremely rare and there are ways to mitigate that with sprinkler system design. They make Reese Test heads that don't extend below ceiling level, so they're less apt to get damaged. In California, Maryland, and Scottsdale, where they have longstanding sprinkler requirements, the fact is twenty, thirty, well, they're past thirty-five years now, the maintenance has not been a, a, a significant issue. Where they have maintenance problems is when people have the opportunity to turn them off and they exercise that option.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead, Joe.
I just have a question. Has Springdale water and sewer been approached? I mean, they're in the middle of trying to.
Yes.
Do the plan and looking for, what's that gonna do? They gotta redo their plans or what's it require for them for Springdale water?
I think you told us there was a meter size difference.
Yeah, there's a meter size. They, they don't have to adjust any plans or line size or anything like that because the sprinkler demand doesn't exist unless there's an emergency, a fire. And so the water system will support residential sprinklers, thirteen D systems as it is. There's no increased demand on the system. It would require, in most cases, a larger meter than is typically required for, you know, a one-family.
So is that kinda like, they're supposed to maintain so much pressure for your fire hydrants and all that? I'm just thinking in regard to their planning going forward, cause they're scraping, trying to come up with enough for, it just struck me, you know, have y'all interacted with them?
Short answer is yes, they're aware.
Someone else? Tom?
You defer to my age. Good evening, my name is Tom Lundstrom, I live at thirteen twenty-seven Elm Springs Road. I typically don't use notes, but I didn't wanna forget anything tonight. I became aware of this proposed ordinance late last week entirely by accident. Local media called and asked my opinion, otherwise I would be blissfully ignorant. That conversation elicited from me a general response, as you may have read in the paper. I do not believe that you can regulate away risk totally and mitigation has its limits. Your job is to decide where mitigation reaches its limit. If our goal is to save every life and never lose a life, then I don't know how we get there. To me, that's an ar, a false argument that leads us to no practical conclusion. To be fair, I do not believe that the world will end if this ordinance passes. I also do not believe the world will end if this ordinance does not pass. We've survived quite nicely until now without this requirement. Is this a solution in search of a problem? Anecdotal evidence from local insurance agencies tell me that it probably is the case. The incidence of property loss, injury, and death in duplex fires in the City of Springdale is very low. I'm not even sure it's ever been quantified exclusively to duplexes. I've not compared that to other causes of loss and death, but I doubt it ranks number one or even where close. Regardless, here are some thoughts I'd like you to consider as you try and reach a conclusion on this difficult question. The representation has been made and repeated that passage would likely cause insurance premiums to fall. I do not believe that to be the case. Of fourteen carriers we surveyed covering buildings with multiple units, excluding apartment buildings with over four units, so these are units less than four, specifically two different carriers offer possibly a discount for having a sprinkler system. The other ten carriers do not. I'm not citing national data, I'm citing a survey performed by local insurance agencies this week. So generally, no duplex gets a discount. If offered, the discount may not be enough to cover the extra expense to purchase a better form of coverage, which will most likely be needed. Let me explain that. Why would better coverage be needed if sprinkler systems are installed? The standard broad-form insurance policy used by most small landlords would not, not cover damage from link, leaking sprinkler systems. So in theory, the owners would need to purchase better coverage of different form, which in turn would increase their insurance premium. Here are the problems with even that better form coverage. Most policy forms will exclude links from, leaks from sprinkler systems unless it was deemed by the insurance company sudden and accidental and reported immediately. Secondly, most of these higher-cost insurance forms, if not all, have specific language that would exclude coverage if the leak had been occurring for multiple days, weeks, or months. have specific language that would exclude coverage if the leak had been occurring for multiple days, weeks or months. It is up to the insurance carrier to interpret this. Good luck. So if a tenant, either purposefully or they did not realize that a leak existed, did not notify the owner of the leak, then the damages could be excluded from insurance coverage and would be paid at the owner's expense. This is a large, unknown financial exposure for owners. How would you reserve capital for that potential liability? Based on my limited knowledge, these systems are typically installed by local plumbers who have some expertise or training. If this ordinance passes, and as it's currently written, there's an emergency clause, are there enough certified plumbers here locally to implement this ordinance in compliance with the emergency clause or even outside the emergency clause? I don't think there are. There are standards and practices involved with these systems that may require a license from the Fire Protection Licensing Board, surely not a quick process. The code section that details the requirements of this system is long. It took me a while to find the code on the internet. This will not be a quick ramp up for local plumbers who choose to be certified. How many will? One, four, a hundred, we don't know. Sprinklers, when discharged, do a lot of damage. One justification offered for the ordinance is that property damage with a sprinkler would be less, property damage would be less if a sprinkler arrested the fire earlier. I think it is reasonable to suppose that the assumed lesser fire damage costs could be overcome by costs associated with water and smoke damage. It would be interesting to know how many of the residential fires in duplexes in Springdale over the last ten years have resulted in property losses, total property losses in the absence of sprinklers. I would contend that absent a total loss, it is quite likely that sprinklers will do more damage to the structure than the fire could. The sprint, the fire ignites, the sprinklers come on, small fire, sprinklers are going to run, damage. Tenants do a lot of damage. The presence of live sprinklers in a residential duplex may be a tempted method of revenge for a nefarious tenant. I can't even begin to tell you the horror stories that Robin, my wife, has experienced in our rental properties over the years by unscrupulous tenants who choose to damage our properties. Setting off the sprinklers on their way out the door seems almost too tempting to resist. My list is longer and others will probably care, cover other points better than I have. But in the interest of time, let me close with one final point, and that is cost. The precise cost of a residential sprinkler system is not known to us in this room today. We speculate. I have heard the national average of a dollar six per square foot tossed around. I'm highly doubtful that is the actual cost in Springdale, Arkansas today. There are those in this audience who have direct experience and may choose to tell you that the installed cost bid locally, less than two years ago, was two dollars sixty-four cents a square foot. For a typical two-bedroom, two-bathroom duplex averaging two thousand square feet, the cost of installation would then be five thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. All of that cost will be raised, will be passed along to the tenant. It will raise the rent by an amount directly attributable to this mandate. Each mandate of this type issued by this body results in a cost that results in higher rent. This seems totally contradictory to the interest expressed by the city in placing more affordable housing into the market. Every increase in any cost makes housing less affordable. It is a death by a thousand cuts. No one regulation is the killer, but regulation on top of regulation on top of regulation at one point will reach the point of being unsustainable. Does it ever stop? The cost burden shifted to tenants because of regulatory mandates makes housing less affordable. A lot, a little, over time, more. I'm concerned that we are reaching a tipping point in northwest Arkansas where rents will exceed the tenant's ability to pay. The cumulative effect of land prices, construction costs and regulations will push affordable housing out. It's inevitable. So whatever role you can play in reducing the cost of housing, do it. Start here tonight by saying no. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tom. Somebody else? Sure.
I'm Shane Free, uh, three, three, five, six Hillview Court. I've got a two-part question, um, for the fire department. Appreciate your, your concern for the citizens. And I agree that one life loss is too many to fire. Of those twenty-seven fatalities in the state that you mentioned, do we know how many of those come from multi-tenant dwellings? And of those, how many came from, from tenants and units adjacent to where the fire started? Got you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Philip?
Thank you, Mayor and councilpeople. I, I want to start out by saying that I know Chief Irwin and I respect him. I think he does a great job. I think our fire department is, uh, um, one of the top in, in the state, if not the country. Uh, you know, we're proud of it. We're proud of the fire department, we're proud of the police department. We're proud of this new city hall here, too. But I want to, uh, two things I want to say is, and this is just personal, uh, experience, I would say, uh, on my part. Whenever this came up and I saw the ordinance, I went into our property manager and she manages probably over three hundred and fifty units in Springdale, single-family houses, duplexes, townhomes, apartments, all of it. And she's worked for me for twenty-three years. And I asked her, I said, Paula, how many fires have we had in these units in the twenty-three years you've been here? And she said, well, we've had two. Uh, one was in a duplex, uh, and it was an arson. And the second one was a skillet fire in an apartment, and it was confined to that one apartment. Uh, we did have to go in and replace the cabinets in there and nobody was injured in either one of these fires at all. Uh, so it took some time and effort and money to, uh, we were lucky the renter had renters insurance and they picked up the tab on it, so that worked out all right. So, uh, and, and so it's not really been, uh, a big issue. And, and, and I just want to say that other than sprinklers, there's a lot of things we do to prevent injury and death because of fires in this city. Me as a landlord, we do, uh, uh, you know, we've got smoke detectors in there. Uh, I think there's an ordinance to that effect. Every year, whenever we get, uh, whenever the time changes, we send out notices to all our people. You need to check your smoke detectors, check the batteries. If you do, if you can't do it, can't reach it, call us, we'll come over and do it for you. Our building codes have, I, I can't tell you how many, uh, regulations or, or, or that we have that are for protecting people in case of fires. The size of the windows, the size of the doors, uh, the placement of the fire hydrant so many feet down the road, not putting too many units in one, uh, uh, on one street. There's, there's just a multitude. Uh, the appliances that you have have safety, uh, uh, equipment with them. And, you know, we take it serious. We love our tenants and we don't want to lose one. Uh, but we feel like there's an adequate job done either whenever the buildings are constructed or as they're maintained going forward to protect adequately the people that we have in there and the citizens of this, of Springdale. We build, uh, we built multiple duplexes, townhomes and apartments in this city. There's people that's built a lot more than we have, that's for sure. Uh, but I can say that we pay attention to it. There's inspections, there's wiring inspections. I would say just about every inspection, not every inspection. Some of it has to do with the structure, but most of it has to do with, do you, is there something here that's going to cause a fire? Is there going to be a short? Is it, I mean, we focus on that all the time. It's not just sprinklers. And we, we build townhomes, uh, like those over by Harbor High School. I don't know if you ever noticed those over there. There are four and five units, um, uh, in each building. Each one of the buildings has side setbacks. So a fire, a, and they have, uh, uh, and I think one of the major reasons for that is if there's a fire in one, it doesn't spread to the other one. Uh, it must be sixteen feet between the walls, something like, between the units. Uh, we do firewalls all the way up. Those firewalls are inspected when we build, build it by building inspectors. If there's, uh, wire running through it or a pipe running through it, it's got to be addressed. It's got to be, it's got to be filled in. We do a lot of things to protect people and we're happy to do it and proud to do it. And I think the fact that we don't have a lot of issues, not just in our units, I'd say in most units in, in Springdale, is because we have these rules and regulations to protect the people. I just don't want this to be all about, uh, if you don't put sprinklers in, you don't care about people. You know, I, I think that's far, far, far off from, uh, from the fact on it. I think we do a great job and, uh, I, um, a, and I won't even address the, the cost issue. I will say, Mr. Lundstrom, I talked to him, uh, we had, uh, uh, we're looking at doing a subdivision and we had too many units for one entrance and exit. And they said, well, if you put fire, um, sprinklers in there, you can exceed the number. So we went and got a, uh, a price on it and it was forty-five hundred to five thousand dollars a unit to put that, this was about two years ago. And we said, no, thank you. We scrapped the deal right there. And, uh, so I just want to emphasize that if, if we don't approve this and I urge you to vote no on it, that it's not because we don't care about the people. We love our people. We work continually on, uh, on keeping them safe. This is just one thing out there. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Philip. Other comments? Anyone? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead, go ahead, Jeff.
A ta, a townhouse is, um, multiple units, typically two-story, um, with separation walls. So it breaks them basically into individual dwelling attached units. They have fire separation, yes.
Townhouses do.
Correct. That's what gives the definition of a townhouse. It's individual units with shared walls, but they are fire separated.
So the upstairs and downstairs are the same dwelling?
Correct.
The same unit?
Yes.
Got you.
And then also you mentioned, uh, the type of sprinkler system this ordinance would require is diff, I'm sorry.
No, I do. Uh, the type of sprinkler system is different from maybe a commercial building sprinkler system, is that correct?
That is correct. In code, where sprinklers are required in one or two family dwellings or townhouses, which we're not asking for one family, but that's just how the code's written. Uh, a thirteen D system is what it's called, is required, so.
This ordinance would be a thirteen D?
Correct. And so thirteen D systems with the change in health department and plumbing regulations are allowed to be a multifunction, a part of the cold water plumbing system in the house. It's not an independent pipe run from a, you know, with an underground fire line like commercial buildings have with an independent riser. Uh, it's part of the plumbing system. They typically will use CPVC or PEX tubing, uh, to connect this, the sprinklers in line with sinks and toilets and, and things.
So a commercial building, you have to have all those different plumbing?
That's correct. In, in, uh, commercial buildings like this one, they, they require different, uh, pipe schedules, larger pipe sizes, a, a dedicated valve in line for the fire system that's independent.
Is there a name for that system?
Uh, NFPA thirteen for commercial buildings, thirteen R for residential that's, uh, like four stories and more, uh, apartments, hotels, motels.
Okay, so do we have an ordinance right now for apartments?
Yes.
And how do we describe those apartments, like what you were just saying, four stories or what?
Uh, no, apartments, uh, in the code, all apartments are required to be sprinkled now.
All apartments are already required to be sprinkled? Now, is it that D thirteen or is that, that more specific?
It would be thirteen R until they exceed four stories and then it would be thirteen, uh, just a straight thirteen system, commercial.
So it's even, it's, it's a more sophisticated system than what this ordinance requires?
Yep.
And why is that, do you know?
It's mostly to do with affordability and, uh, the protection, the required protection increases as you change the use of a building, the height of a building, the occupancy load of a building. And so, uh, those are all very small in dwellings and so the least amount of protection. The, the sprinkler discharge requirement for a thirteen D system is point zero five gallons per minute per square foot of area covered by a sprinkler head. So a twenty by ten bedroom, two hundred square feet, requires a sprinkler flow of ten gallons per minute. In bigger commercial buildings, you're talking about point one GPM per square foot, which is double that up to point four, point five, depending on the commodity and storage arrangement.
So what's the difference between, uh, a building like, uh, Philip was talking about that has five or six townhouses in one building and an apartment building? What sets that, what are the, our ordinance that we have now calls it an apartment?
Well, it's to do with the, the definitions in the building code and the residential code. It, it's semantics. Townhouses are individual units with adjoining walls stuck together. Typically, you know, two-story with adjoining walls, two-story.
Apartments still have that?
Apartments do not have that.
I believe townhouses typically have their own county ID number as well. Where a duplex would be on one parcel, townhouses are in individual parcels so they can be financed individually to owners. That's from my banking knowledge of them.
Right. Apartments, you could have residents above and below you.
Right.
Right? Okay.
Ha, has there been any indication or do we have any information that, in apartments that are sprinkled, that they've been tampered with by tenants?
Not to my knowledge in Springdale, we've had, uh, I'm not aware of any. Now, realize my exposure to incidents is limited, but since I've been fire marshal, we've had zero, uh, in hotels, motels or, uh, the, the two, the two intentional sprinkler damaging incidents. One happened in a Springdale public school and one happened at Ozark Guidance Center, in, in behavioral incidents, but none in rental properties.
So these thirteen D systems, is that a, is that a, I don't know anything about them. So is that a standard system or is it, do different companies make these? Is it one company?
Uh, there's all kinds of different ways. Thirteen, NFPA thirteen D is a standard. And so what we do is evaluate system design and installation compared to that standard for acceptance. So you can do it however you want. What? Uh, what most, um, people end up doing is buying a package deal, a thirteen D system. You can buy from a manufacturer because that includes the, the design cost. Uh, and then plumbers can do the installation.
So plumbers have to be specially licensed to be able to?
Not licensed, it's, it's not controlled by the Fire Protection Licensing Board like thirteen or thirteen R systems. Uh, thirteen Ds can be installed by a plumber. They do have manufacturer, uh, required training. Uh, Upennore is the one I'm familiar with just because I went to their training. It's a roughly a three-hour, uh, training class. And then they oversee the first installation by the plumber and then they're certified to install Upennore systems. I'm sure other manufacturers that sell, uh, packages would have the same, the same requirement for, you know, an installer. But there's all different ways to do it, you know? Fire in sprinkler companies can do then. No. Uh, no, uh, there's, uh, I can't speak to what an insurance, you know, an insurer might require, but there's, there's no fire department inspections that take place.
So if a sprinkler's going off in an apartment, at what point does that sprinkler go off?
Uh, individual sprinkler heads and realize sprinkler heads are individual. So when a fire occurs, all the sprinklers don't go off. Uh, they each have a frangible bulb, which is a temperature sensitive element in it. When the temperature, uh, in residential applications, the temperature would have to reach between a hundred and thirty-five and a hundred and seventy degrees, depending on the manufacturer of the head, uh, that breaks a little glass bulb and allows water to flow out. So only the heads close to the fire will open because they're the only ones that are going to exceed that temperature.
And so what about the sprinkler going off? Does the fire department turn it off or does, how does, how does the sprinkler get turned off?
Yeah, well, yeah, it depends on the application. In commercial buildings, yes, the, the fire department wants the fire is, we're sure it's contained. We can, we have devices that we can plug the hole, so we stop the sprinkler flow and then we'll turn off the system and drain, uh, the piping. In a residential application, we would shut the water off at the meter.
So the fire department shut the water off?
Yes. A homeowner could do it if there was an accidental discharge, yeah.
So due to the different manufacturers of these sprinkler systems, they would need different tra- uh, a plumbing company or plumber would need different training for each manufacturer? Not training, but would need to be exposed to how each different one works, correct?
Potentially, that, you know, that would be up to them. What, uh, what I anticipate is a plumber would be, would do Upennore systems and that's what he would bid a project based on, you know, I'd. But to be honest, that, that's up to them, nothing.
So aside from heat, what else can set these off? I know, um, when I was in a hotel once, that somebody hung a wire hanger on it and it broke the glass inside and boom, you had a flood.
Yeah, yeah, physical damage is, is probably the second most common cause of sprinkler activation. Uh, now there are design ways to, uh, eliminate that. They make, uh, recessed, they make sprinkler heads that are, uh, that little black circle right there. There's a sprinkler head under it. You can't see it, it's not exposed, it's not subject to physical damage. Uh, but the heat will allow that to drop out and the sprinkler head pops down and discharges water. So there's design ways to get around that, but that is a.
And added cost?
I'm sure, yeah. Every, I'm sure every option adds cost.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, I apologize that I didn't ask these questions the other night, but, um, you had talked a little the other night about how you had kind of reached this point of making this recommendation that you had worked on this. I think you even said you worked on it with Rogers Fire Department. Is that what you told us?
Yes.
Okay. And, and, and what, what was that process that you went through?
Well, the, the process we went through started with, uh, getting the option for plumbers to install these systems and, and removing some of the health department and, uh, plumbing code hangups that were in the way. Prior to last year, these systems would require to be installed by a licensed, uh, Fire Protection Board installer and at significantly more cost. Uh, and then, so we met with the Home Builders Association, Chief Irwin, uh, Chief Jenkins at Rogers and myself and Chief Hyde, who's Rogers Fire Marshal. Uh, and we gave the proposal to them and let them ask questions.
Can you remind me again what the Home Builders Association, they were not, they were agreeable on a part of it, but not all of it? Is that correct?
Uh, yes, they, they were in support of requiring sprinklers in anything, three attached units or more. Uh, and they chose not to comment on duplexes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, um, did you discuss or was the consideration of, uh, this ordinance not applying to townhouses? Since townhouses, as you described earlier, are divided by firewalls, does that make a difference? If there's a firewall there, I mean, that's to suppress fire, right? Firewall?
It's to keep it spreading unit to unit.
Keep it from spreading.
That is the, the intent, yes.
Would that not serve the same function as the sprinkler? In a, in a townhouse situation?
Uh, maybe a two-part question. Yeah, so first of all, did we remove or consider removing?
Did you have that, you know, uh, thought process on townhouses?
We did, uh.
Okay, explain your thinking on that.
Okay. So sprinklers serve a very specific purpose and that's not just to keep from spreading fire laterally. That's literally what the fire suppression or the fire separation wall does in townhouses. Keeps it in, uh, keeps the fire itself for a period of time. Uh, but what sprinklers do is give people time to get out of their house, uh, and keep the fire small and limit the damage.
In, in my, my due diligence today, I learned quite a bit about fire systems. Never, never, uh, investigated them before. Um, I did poll insurance as well, like Tom did. And, uh, two of the, uh, bigger agencies in town didn't offer anything, any incentives. I asked them about any kind of, uh, um, problems they had with them and they said, yes. Last winter, they had a tenant that it did bust their pipe in their wall and flooded, filled up their wall cavity full of water and flooded it, um, which they did cover through a renter's policy. But, um, I did also figure out that you do need to winterize these if you're in a cold climate. So that's an additional cost to these developers and, and renters. Um, but, um, I have three main concerns. Um, one's that the plumbers, we, we don't know if they're ready or not. Um, uh, that's one of my concerns. You know, Rogers is doing it right now, but they're probably having some issues with that, getting those guys certified. Costs a hundred ninety-nine dollars and an online certification. Um, and then, um, we don't really know the real cost to the product because there's not any availability here. And so that, that's kind of a barrier to entry. Um, and then also, also the additional cost with the winterization. Um, I'm sure these guys want to inspect them too if they're in their houses, you know, as well. So those are kind of my issues with it. Um, I do think obviously loss of life is, 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 uh, the main concern. You know, when I was reading about it, they, they said that's the main concern with these systems. The main is, the main reason they would do them is to, to not have loss of life, not to protect assets, which these people have assets too that they're trying to protect as well. A lot of these guys that are in this room as well. So I see both sides of the, of the issue. Um.
And I, I can only speak to one, one piece of that and that's winterization. If they're installed correctly, there is no additional steps. Uh, the design of the system in a freezing climate, uh, will call for insulation to be done in a specific way and, and we will look at the piping when they install it and make sure it meets that. The one time the fire department inspects thirteen D systems is when they're installed and accepted. Uh, just so we know that it meets, uh, code requirement.
That was in an apartment building, so.
Yep.
Apartment buildings have to be winterized, is that what you're saying?
No, sir. The, it says on their own website that these need to be winterized. Um, but the apartment ones don't get winterized, obviously, or it wouldn't have. And of course, we had really cold temperatures. It was probably, that was the coldest I've ever seen, so that's just.
Apartment building, you probably don't have a lot of them. I mean, your, your floor, your attic may, may be somebody else's floor, so it's probably not, not as critical.
Any other comments or questions? Yes.
I'd like to clarify one thing. Uh, the Home Builders Association was mentioned several times. And let me explain, they're an association. That staff does not have the authority to speak for the builders in Springdale, Arkansas or anywhere else. You know, they're staff people. You know, they might have given their opinion, but they're not experts on building. They're not experts on sprinkler systems and they don't have the authority to speak on the half of the members that are even members of the Home Builders Association. So I will just say that it might sound good, but as far as I'm concerned, that doesn't mean anything. They don't, I'm a member, they don't speak for me. And I'd say they don't speak for, on certain issues, uh, maybe they don't speak for ninety-five percent of the home builders or, or, or builders. They do home shows, you know? They put balloons on signs and all this kind of stuff, but they're not there to, to, uh, dictate policy or, or give the opinion of the builders as far as this type of policy. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Make it brief, please.
Yes, sir, I will. Going back to the, to me, the way I look at it, if you put firewalls in a townhome or a duplex, it becomes a freestanding home. Now, my question to you and to the S- Springdale, are you ready now to move this to homes? That, that's why my thinking is, I appreciate the possible protections, but that, that duplex is just like a freestanding home. You can have a blazing fire here, you've got to mitigate that. That's just like a freestanding home. So the next step is going to go into every new home in Springdale. I ask the question.
Thank you. All right. No other comments? Yes, Kobe?
Eric, if it's appropriate, um, if this were to pass, we may want to discuss, um, if there are builders who already have plans in the pipeline, if they've already been through the planning process or even if they've discussed with their banks, this could have a economic impact on their development as well. We may want to take a, a gear before, uh, any of this.
Is there a? Would that need to be part of the motion?
We've got a motion.
Or do we vote on it and then could we deal with that separately if we need to? Okay, okay, we'll do that. Let, let's go ahead and vote on the motion that's before us. And, uh, if there are no other comments, I'll ask Denise Colarol.
Flores?
No, ma'am.
Harriman? Fujiru?
No.
Pow?
No.
Williams?
No.
Watson?
No.
Overton?
No.
Kobe, we need a start date on that?
Redundant as usual.
All right, thank you all. Uh, I, let's see, that was all ordinance committee, wasn't it, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll move on to item eleven. And Wyman is ready to present this, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the execution of a contract. Wyman?
While back there, Airport Commission made a request to the council to fund a hanger that they estimated cost seven hundred thousand. We advertised for bids and did not get any bids. And we, uh, they found a contractor that did pick up a set of the specs and everything and asked him if he would quote on it and he gave us a quote, that's slightly more than seven hundred thousand. And through negotiation, we've come up with a contract that the Airport Commission has approved and asked the council to waive competitive bidding. And they've agreed to pay the increase over the seven hundred thousand on airport funds.
So no bids were taken?
We advertised for bids, but we did not receive any other deadline. The contractor we negotiated with is one of the four that picked up a set of plans, but he didn't submit a bid.
I wanted to take this back to the Airport Commission so it could come, so they could decide and ask the questions they needed to ask and then bring it to the council as a recommendation.
Oh, okay. So we're not doing any action on this?
Well, you know, you're, you're, you're ultimately the one who would have to, you, you have to waive the competitive bidding because we, we tried to take competitive bids and we didn't, we didn't get any on time.
So you're saying the Airport Commission has not agreed to the nineteen thousand?
Yes, they have. They have. The only action before us is to waive competitive bidding and then authorize the execution of the contract. But the Airport Commission has agreed to pay the extra. How much is it, Wyman, you probably said? Nineteen thousand?
Yes, nineteen thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
The council had appropriated up to seven hundred thousand several months ago.
So the, the almost twenty thousand, that was, how does that affect our budget at the beginning of the year?
It won't affect ours. Well, I guess the airport, they're part of our budget, but, but it doesn't affect our general fund.
They, they have money separate.
Yeah.
They've got two grants that they're going to have to match. And so they've got already commitments for the majority. They've only got like three hundred thousand. And they've already got commitments for half of that.
This wouldn't impact our general fund beyond the seven hundred.
I move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comment or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Harriman?
Yes.
Fujiru?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Flores?
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item twelve, Planning Commission report recommendations by Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
The first item on the agenda is a request to rezone point six-six acres located at three sixteen, three twenty-four Northwest End Street. The request is to rezone the property from, uh, C one, neighborhood commercial district to low density multifamily residential district MF four. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from neighborhood commercial district C one to low medium density multifamily residential district MF four and declaring an emergency.
Will the ordinance be adopted?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any comments or questions? Anyone in the audience on this issue? Okay.
Fujiru?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Will the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujiru?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance and emergency clause carry seven zero.
And as usual, the emergency clauses are added because there's pending transactions on these pieces of property. The next item is a request to rezone six point one nine acres located at seventeen ninety East Highway two sixty-four. The, uh, request is to rezone the property from Agriculture District A one to General Commercial District C two. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending number thirty-three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agriculture District A one to General Commercial District C two and declaring an emergency.
Will the ordinance pass?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fujiru?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Will the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman? Fujiru?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Both the ordinance and emergency clause carry seven zero.
The next item is a request to approve a conditional use for a ten- The next item is a request to approve a conditional use for a tandem lot split for property located at 702 North Thompson Street. The planning commission reviewed this conditional use for a tandem lot split and recommends approval. The title of the resolution reads a resolution approving a conditional use for Tandy Oil Company at 702 North Thompson is set forth in ordinance number 4030, with the only condition being that there be no employees at this location. It's for personal storage only, and it's being split off as a separate tract.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other? Go ahead, Joe.
So conditional use allows it to be split?
Correct.
What if they want to use it for something different someday?
Well, they'll have to come in and do something differently because I don't think it meets the fire code. It doesn't have the water, if I remember correctly, it doesn't have water service to it and the access to it. They would have to do some major changes before they could use it for anything other than for personal storage. And that's what they asked for the conditional use for it to be for personal storage only.
What items are being stored there? Do you know?
I can't answer that. It's just personalized for all I know.
We, I think we had a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions?
Overton?
Yes.
Flores? Harriman?
Yes.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
The next item is also a request for a conditional use for a tandem lot split for property at 1252 Cooper Drive, which is the peaks. The reason they're bringing in this lot split is for financing purposes. This property is being developed in phases with apartments being in for financing purposes. They need it on a separate track, and so that's why they're requesting the conditional use for the tandem lot split. The planning commission recommends approval with no conditions set for that tandem lot.
I move the resolution pass.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Other comments or questions? Anyone?
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
The next item is in connection with the preliminary plat for Whispering Springs subdivision. There is a requirement for an exit, second access into the subdivision to meet the fire code. Howard Anderson Road is a gravel road at this time. The planning commission is recommending that the waiver of doing those street improvements be approved subject to the following, that that Howard Anderson Road be fully designed to match the street plan standards for a local street. And construction of two lanes at a minimum width of 27 feet be built, with all drainage improvements built to accommodate full buildout of curb gutter and sidewalk before the final plat can be approved. In other words, it has to be designed as a local street. They only have to pave two lanes of it, but the drainage structures and everything has to be done. So when we go in and widen it out and put curb and gutter as other development, we don't have to move the drainage. And that's the planning commission's recommendation.
So the developers pay for the engineering, and then they pay for half of the street?
They pay to pave 27 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. But we get a full two widths of lanes through there to serve as a second access point to the subdivision. The title of the resolution reads a resolution approving a waiver of streets, improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks is set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Howard Anderson and Butterfield Coach Road to County Road 92 in connection with PP 2107, a preliminary plat for Whispering Springs. And that condition would be in option one, to grant that waiver with that condition in there. Now, the other access will be Hilton Road. And so that will have to be built as well before they can get final plat approval and be able to get any access to any of the homes or certificates of occupancy for any of the homes in the subdivision.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Option one.
Oh, sorry. Second. Okay, motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Yes, go ahead. Go up the mic, Joe. Thank you.
This also involves that island of five properties, and this is a question for Ernest. Because I sent you all the packages showing you the county easements. Some of them registered, some of them don't. Springdale's had a history, as you annex, you took the easements and everything from the county. You had a water line there that's two inches, that now is going to 12 for fire coming down through there. And so there's the 400 and, I think it's 410 feet in the middle. And the developers are all working to pay for the part through the center. But are you going to annex that, Ernest, that island? It'll make it a lot easier for all of us.
We have looked, we actually looked at the larger, there's a very large area that's a big island. Part of it's bounded by Fayetteville, part of it's bounded by Springdale. But there's issues with the water service boundaries. But if it's just the...
Well, not on this part.
If it's just the five acres that's located...
The five properties.
My recollection is if it's the five that are, if they're completely surrounded by the city...
They are.
Then they could theoretically be brought forward as an island annexation if they're completely surrounded by the city.
Could we go ahead and move forward on that, once you determine that?
Well, it would make it a lot easier on everybody because then you would have the full 60 feet right away that was Worcester County 559, all the way down through there. Plus, you've got that 15-foot White River water. So the city would have 75 feet all the way down through there. It just makes it kind of awkward where part of the easements are in the county, part of it's in the city. So if you all could do that, it'd make this a lot easier. And it'd open it up for the bigger water lines and better fire protection, police, all of it.
Yeah, we've done a couple of island annexations out that way already. We did one there at the roundabout at Haverton and Don Tyson. And then we did, that was just three or four parcels. Then we did one with, I would say, it was like a dozen parcels there off of Haverton as well. So this would be kind of the logical next step.
Yeah, if we could, if we could go ahead, if everything looks good on that, if we could move forward with that pretty soon. And if we need to wait and sort things out on the other parcels where the water service boundaries are a question, then we can handle that later.
Okay. Let's see, we had a motion and a second? All right, roll call, please.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
I'm sorry. Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry 7-0.
All right, thank you. Item 13, I'm going to turn over to our city attorney.
Thank you. This is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas and declaring emergency, properties at 1274 Tolleson Loop and 700 Henshaw.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Does anyone here need to speak to this property? Okay, Denise?
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Has mercy come?
Second.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugiruse?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance and emergency clause carry 7-0.
All right, item 14, if y'all can have your calendars handy. We need... The 7th. The problem with the 7th is planning commission is at night, and we only have one room now, unless y'all want to go somewhere else. But we have met on the Wednesday following, if you wanted to do that.
I have church obligations on Wednesday nights.
Would, would the 30th or 31st somewhere in there work? I'm not sure we're going to have much of a committee we're going to have if we do it that soon.
I won't be available 30th or 31st.
Well?
Yeah, it works for me as well. Is there a way, is there a way then we could do maybe piggyback it on? I know we've not done that at least since I've been here, but I haven't done that before.
You're talking August 30th?
Yes. I know we like to have time between committee and, I mean, we sure needed it this week, right?
Yeah.
What about Thursday night? What, is that the first?
The second.
Second?
That would still be, that would still be a week and a half before our council meeting. So that would still work.
The 30th is best for me.
So you're saying 30th and then the next week?
Yes.
Next weekend?
It sounds like we got 30th and we got the second, or two days.
No, that's next.
We're looking at. Oh, that's true.
This is two days to get out.
Okay. What that's going to, and we can do that, we don't know what we're going to have for the agenda. You know, that gives us basically two days to get the agenda out, three days, which is normal. But then we're going to have two weeks between the committee meeting and council meeting. And if there's something that comes up, you know, things can come up in two weeks. So I may, I may be asking you to add something. But if we do, we'll send you all the information we have on it. Yeah, so like an island annexation ordinance, yeah, or something like that. Okay, so the 30th it is?
Yep.
All right. 5:30 in this room, yes. Any other comments from council?
Got a question from a citizen the other day. Has the city been contacted by the governor's office for potential Afghan refugees?
No, not to my knowledge. I haven't heard anyone, or, and I did hear today that they've taken Fort Chaffee off the considerate, list of consideration, so, okay. That's what I, that's what I heard reported today. Lurinda, I think it was y'all that reported it, so. Okay, all right, city attorney, oh, I'm sorry, any other council? City attorney?
Yes, sir.
Nothing from me.
So moved.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.